Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
All right, let's get started for today. Welcome, everyone, to the Legislative and Human Services Resource Committee on Tuesday, September 12th. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment today?
Morning.
All right, seeing none, we will move to item two. Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
It's on move.
Support by Commissioner Fordak, support by Commissioner Brebeau. In favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on to item three, Human Resources Performance Measures. Bye, Amy. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Amy Ralston, the Director of Human Resources for the county. And I will honor the fact that you guys have a pretty busy agenda for this morning and try to keep my updates to five minutes. If I look back over the work that we have done in human resources over the past year, I would say the one theme that really unifies our efforts is that we have engaged in a lot of planning and preparation that is going to set the stage for the years to come. I'm going to give you a few examples of that type. The first example is that we, over the past year, have undergone a planning process to prepare for union contract negotiations. The contracts that are being negotiated expire this year and next, so negotiations are actually underway right now. The county's labor attorney, Bob Chauvinick, and also Human Resources Manager Stephanie Hernandez have taken a leadership role in the process of planning for negotiations. As part of a larger group that includes several people from Administration, Fiscal Services Director Steve Duarte, and myself, as part of the planning process, we gather input from another, a number of sources, including department managers from HR and from Fiscal Services, and also county departments. I'm a strong believer that whatever we negotiate, county departments have to live with the terms of that contract for three years, and they have to successfully manage their operations. So I really believe in getting their input. We brought our recommended strategy to the bargaining and benefits subboard, and that group endorsed the moving forward with that negotiation. So we're currently negotiating three contracts that are set to expire at the end of this year. The next activity that I wanted to briefly touch on is the work that's been going on over the past several years. We can figure and test a new HR and payroll system. That work has involved not only HR, but also IT and Fiscal Services. Holly Hartley, who is the HR manager responsible for our HRIS systems and the HR side of things, has really done a lot of great work in taking a leadership role for the HR piece of that project. It's anticipated to go live in November, so we're kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with that one, hopefully. The next thing I wanted to touch on is a comprehensive strategic planning process that we undertook over the past year. And that process is going to guide the county's efforts with diversity, equity, and inclusion over the next five years. HR Manager Darius Quinn took a leadership role in that process, and he assembled a group that we call an Executive Oversight Group. Those are people who have executive or elected official goals with the county. They're people with a positional authority to move the needle and really help us to forward progress toward achieving the goals that we have identified in the plan. And it was that group that really is the architect of our plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion. In obtaining input, as we arrived at the plan, we asked from various community organizations, and we also asked for input from the county's employees and our Cultural Insight Council, which has been instrumental in diversity, equity, and inclusion planning over the past 15 years. The first couple of elements of that strategic plan are being implemented over the course of this year. Next, we drafted a new performance review process that will be rolled out toward the latter part of this year, and that will apply to our non-represented employees. Compared to the existing process, the new process will be streamlined. It will be more conversational and much more development-oriented. So we're looking more at kind of focusing on the future, and how do we leverage the information that we learn from past performance to impact future performance and help people to do a better job, and if they aspire to, to get a better job. We also partnered with the Sheriff Department over the past year to help them to identify opportunities to improve the recruitment process. In light of two specific challenges they have been working through. The first is with their emergency communications. When we added Wyoming, they had to increase capacity and hire a number of people to fill that need. So we helped them to identify plans to improve the hiring process, both in terms of the ability to hire people more quickly, but we also looked at how do we improve the effectiveness of that process. And then the second challenge that we've been partnering with them to identify, how can we change the hiring process to help them to be successful, is a challenge that has to do with, they hired a number of corrections officers, a pretty big number, T-92, when they expanded the jail. And those people are eligible to retire now. So they're planning for how to manage a smooth transition in light of those retirements. We also worked with Matthew Van Zetten, the UAW, and others to make sure that we are prepared for the transition of asset employees over to county employment effective October 1. And then last but not least, we went through the exercise last year of completely revamping our key metrics to make sure that we were confident that the key metrics were aligned with the Board of Commissioners' top priorities, with our HR mission statement, and also with the strategic goals that we have for HR. So this year, we're seeing it as more of a kind of gather baseline data kind of year, and next year, we'll have better information that we can use to identify how we're doing in comparison to our goals and trends over time. So I guess in summary, what I'd like to do is just reinforce the work. Well, it's, a lot of it is kind of behind-the-scenes planning work. It's important work that is setting the stage for the events of the year. I also wanted to thank the HR team, because this work has really kept them happy, and it will over the next year or so, as well as we continue to execute the plans that are in place. Next year, when I do the longer form of the PM update, I should have better information about how things went, as we have been executing these various kind of plans that we've laid the foundation for over the course of the past year. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions for Amy today? Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you, Chair. Amy, we had a matrix on diversity, which I think is really important, and I always thought we do quite well on. But as a part of that matrix, veterans. Do we know how many veterans that we have working for us in the county?
I can find out. I'm not sure, but I'll find out for you.
Okay. I think that would be nice to be included, possibly, if you could think that out and see how that fits in, if we'd be helping that area. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Bukowski.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your department's work. Last year, we did a lot of looking at what was labeled wage compression and all that stuff relative to non-unionized staff. What have been the results of that?
Well, at this point, we're at a situation where, if you were to look at what I would call structural wage compression, which means if you were to compare the market wage for a fully capable person in a union job versus the MPP supervisor to that person, that structural could, there is enough of a distance where there is a meaningful pay increase for the supervisor versus their subordinate. Now, in order to see the full realization of the structural changes that we made, because we made them starting with new hires, in a lot of cases with our unionized folks, it's going to take 25 years for all of that kind of residual wage compression to go away. But we've got a structural fix in place that, over time, will fix the problem.
But the results of last year's or this year's increase? Because didn't we do that with one fell swoop? The folks that were, there was a sort of non-unionized folks that were kind of behind?
Yeah. Yeah, good question. Yeah, what we did was, with the guidance of the Fiscal Services, or I'm sorry, the Finance Committee, we were able to make some adjustments for the MPP that basically get them to the point in the pay grade that would be warranted based on their service and their competence in the job.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Fordak.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for the report, Amy. I got a question in regards to your voluntary turnover rate. It looks like it went up a little bit from 15 to 16, and then, I don't know if you gave up on it on 17, because it's not solicited.
No, that's just, yeah.
Zero is the goal, I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, what are you doing to combat that? Because, you know, we're on a competitive market, you know, a lot of employment, a lot of opportunities, and how do we compete to keep the best talent at the county?
I would say a couple of things. I mean, we're at a situation right now where we have still 5% voluntary turnover, where if you were to compare us with almost any other company or industry, our turnover is actually much lower than others, especially considering that we've been in a competitive labor market with, you know, practically zero unemployment for years now. There are a couple of things that I think have made a difference. The first is, we have a much more intensive focus on making sure that we know what the market is paying, and making sure that we have plans in place to the ability to fund those plans, that we stay aligned. I think in the past, we've had a more kind of internal focus, and that has really changed to be more external. So just keeping track and keeping our pulse on what that is is very important. We also have partnered with Lisa LaPlante, and she has helped us to deploy various strategies to market the things that are great about the county. The fact that relative to others, we do have great job security. We have a, actuarially speaking, 100% funded pension plan, you know, so we have a lot to offer. You can make a difference in your local community. And I think Lisa, we still have a lot to work to do in that area, to be honest, but she's helped us to at least get a start. So I think we need to continue to focus on that. But we haven't seen, you know, huge unacceptable levels of turnover, and I think the uptick is still pretty reasonable. In terms of the 2017, that's just kind of how the numbers are formatted in terms of that type of metrics. We don't anticipate zero, but we hope to keep it under five.
Great, thank you.
You have any questions for Amy today? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Amy. Next, item four, Sheriff Department Performance Measurement. Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mine's going to be a tad bit longer than each ours, so hope you act comfy. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the Sheriff's Department's performance reviews, and I got to make sure I'm going through this. Okay, so, side arrow, okay. So we're going to talk, just to give you a quick overview, and we're going to try to evolve your board priorities and to walk through those things that we think are significant for you to look at for the Sheriff's Department. Here are your priority alignment. You want stable revenue, efficient use of resources, safe communities, citizen participation, proactive innovative government, and high quality of life. And I think through our presentation, we're going to talk to you about how the Sheriff's Department helps you reach your goals, and those are also our goals. Stable revenues. So this is complicated for an entity who obviously can't determine much about our revenues coming in. That being said, over the last several years, a substantial amount of our growth in personnel has been funded by contracts. So we work very hard to make sure that we're partnering and that we do get cost recovery where feasible for services that we're providing. And we also leverage those services that we get contracts for to help serve the entire community. And we've talked through that many times as we're working through different contracts. Some examples of where we're contracting for some services, obviously, you know, our township and city patrols, dispatch services and 911, which you're hoping I don't talk too much about today, and I won't talk too much about today. But inmate work programs through the road commission, our Kent narcotics teams, where we bring in people from other entities and help meet our mission, fighting drugs within Kent County, but then also provide revenue for those programs by, those agencies are paying for their office. They help us collect seizure funds, and then help fund drug enforcement throughout our community. We charge for community events, security, and traffic management, and we're able to bring in resources while we're still providing that safety and security for the community that we all expect. We have a substantial amount of donated programs. Our K-9 program, which I'm sure you've seen us advertise, was a crowdfunding initiative. It's been very successful. To date, we've raised over $100,000 and have to grow our program to a level that is a very serviceable program for our community. And our mounted units, where we provide mounted unit support countywide. I think you'll often see it downtown, in festivals, and even our after-hour bar district. We are able to provide patrols, but we also provide it for specific events such as security at Fifth Third Ball Park, or available to help look for somebody who might be missing because you're higher up. It is a very effective manage crowds, and this is largely funded by donations, so that it's not a burden on the County General Fund. Efficient use of resources. This is where I think the Sheriff's Department is the strongest. We have a lot of resources. We need a lot of resources. What we do is to work very hard all the time to try to leverage those resources and work with other entities that need our service and we need their service. And I'll throw a couple of examples out here. We work very closely with Network 1A to provide mental health in the correction facility. It would not be effective for us to hire our own people, train our own people, keep them up to speed, to provide that service in the correctional facility when we have a community resource that will do that. So that's an example of leveraging community dollars and working together to a common goal, because mental health is their goal and ours. We have agreements in place with all agencies throughout Kent County to help each other in the circumstance that I don't have enough resources in a situation, or they don't have enough resources in an emergency situation. This allows us to have less overhead for surge when an emergency situation happens, and it's an effective and efficient way to use the resources you've given us. We contract with Kentwood and Walker to provide forensic services, because their call load is low enough that it doesn't mandate they have their own forensic services. But every citizen who's the victim of a crime deserves high-quality, highly-trained forensic capacity. Provide that through a contract to these communities. Examples, and one of my favorites is contracting with Lighthouse Academy, which is a charter school, to further the education requirements in our correctional facility, so that inmates who are in our facility have an opportunity for an actual high school diploma and a GED, depending on what their particular needs are. Safe community is one of your priority alignments. Obviously, we think we fit this niche pretty closely. We're here to provide safety and security. Give you a couple of examples of how we do that. We have a 24-hour road patrol division. 24 hours a day, we are out there with sufficient resources to answer calls for service and to respond to emergencies. We have a secure correctional facility. We have an emergency communications dispatch center. Not all counties have that. Investigative and forensic resources to investigate crime. Again, every citizen who's the victim of a crime has the right to have that crime fully vetted in a professional way. We have a tactical response team. This is the team that would be used in the event that something exceeds the capability of a general patrol officer to respond to, maybe a hostage situation, or a barricaded gunman, or an active shooter after the initial response and when the offender is still outstanding. We have school resource programs, which we've talked about at length, that's a partnership with our schools, and that security in our schools provides that level of security that is needed to keep those schools safe, the communication open between law enforcement and the schools, which is really necessary for preventing issues from getting out of control. We have a community policing unit. That unit largely participates in training programs and in communication and preventative patrols. That program is imperative for all of our teaching programs. If we want to teach a parent or teaching, or a student group on computer safety, for example, or bullying, those are all through our community policing officers largely. We talked about county investigations teams. We have a very robust K-9 program now. That K-9 program, we have a narcotics dog, we have an arson dog, we have law enforcement, where they would be on general patrol, and they would be, they would be used to help clear buildings, examples like that. But we also have a comfort dog that works at our child assessment center that helps to ease the mind of a victim of a sexual assault. And we have it in our correctional facility, which is commonly done, but very effective for avoiding narcotics being introduced into our correctional facility, which is extremely dangerous and full of liability for the Sheriff's Department and the county. We've talked about a lot of these other units before, but on and on, we have programs that meet the niches that are imperative in our community to keep us safe. Citizen participation is on your priorities. It's also extremely important for a Sheriff's Department, because it is that citizen participation that helps us communicate our goals, our needs to the citizens. And with that relationship, we're able to avoid conflict in times when they might not be happy with the outcome of a particular incident or a decision of the department. But when they understand the complexity of the entire department, and in general, the way that we communicate often, and the way that we are transparent, it helps us bridge that gap when there's a time of need. A couple of things that are really important that we've added to this program. We've added a community outreach person in the last 18 months that works very specifically on this. They manage all of our social media accounts. They take comments and feedback. They'll answer every question anybody has on Facebook, and they answer them pretty readily. We've received multiple reports of crimes through their social media accounts, and it's helped us to really control the message going out to our population, as opposed to we do news releases, they cover what they want to cover, we have to answer what questions they have, but we don't have the ability to push out specific information without these social media accounts. It's been very effective, and our reach has really increased with that program. Couple of other things. We have a Citizens Police Academy, and Emily's dad just joined our Citizens Police Academy, and we had our last, our first session last week. This program is a 13-week-long program, a deep dive into the operations of a law enforcement agency and correctional facility. Highly recommended if any of you ever got an opportunity to do it. So far, we've graduated over 800 people year-to-date. Forgotten Man Ministries. This is a volunteer program that works in our correctional facility, and includes hundreds of people, literally, that commit and volunteer and administer to the inmates and interact. And that program helps people feel like they are doing something to help this population who are incarcerated. But it also helps the incarceration feel like somebody cares, that somebody is still thinking about them, that somebody is still willing to stand behind them and to walk with them as they get through their time of need. We collaborate and partner with Silent Observer, and actually, this works hand-in-hand with our social media, where we're able to put out, you know, if this picture of this person that was involved in a crime, if you have any information about it, you can respond to our social media, or you can respond to Silent Observer. We give, inform Silent Observer. Silent Observer gives tips to us on a regular basis. It's a great program. We also have a substantial number of volunteer programs. I don't know if you guys know, but we probably have over 700 volunteers that work on a regular basis for the Sheriff's Office. That includes trail patrol, handicap patrol. There's some people who will check on people who are shut in and just need somebody to check on them. We'll have people check on your house if you're going to be on an extended leave out of the area, and you just need somebody to make sure everything's okay else. We have, obviously, the K-9 program, where we've got a lot of donations, so we've got a lot of opportunity for citizens to participate with the Sheriff's Department. I don't know if you've heard of our National Night Out. It's a big program that we do annually, where we really get an opportunity to interact with the community. Proactive and innovative government. So I gave some thought to this, you know, I don't know how much more proactive an entity can be than the Sheriff's Office. We literally drive neighborhoods every night, check doors every single day, make contact with your business owners, make contact with your citizens, to make sure that they know the government is here and that the Sheriff's Department is here to serve them. It also includes programs at the correctional facility. I talked to you a little bit about Forgotten Man Ministries. We have a Biblical Lives pod that is operated almost exclusively from Forgotten Man Ministries. And this is a program that is a step-through process. It's about 90 days long. If an inmate went through this process, their likelihood to re-offend is about 50% than it is without this program. So from the humanitarian standpoint, obviously, you can see why this is important to us, because anytime we can keep somebody from re-offending, they have an opportunity to feel good about their life, to participate in our community, to do things that are positive. But from a financial standpoint, every day that you keep an inmate out of jail, you save about $35 a day on the very conservative, if it's not a high-need person. So it's very important that programs that are proactive such as this are supported. And in the Sheriff's Department, we do that. High quality of life. This is a phenomenal place to live and work. It is something, you know, we're so blessed every day. But we continue to be blessed, because we are doing an adequate job in protecting and serving this community. Because without general security, the population doesn't feel good about being at events, Third River Run, or Art Prize, or any of the other wonderful events that we have in our community. In fact, as most of these events go off without any major public safety issues, and that's largely because they're planned, they're secured ahead of time, there's ample communication set up, there's cooperation between agencies, and we all work together to make sure that there is a high quality of life. We need to continue to do that. As we continue to plan different community events, we have to understand that there has to be that element of security first, and if the risk is increasing in today's threat environment. We also provide technical knowledge to our community in the way of public safety messages or security inspections for schools and buildings. We get proactive requests all the time to come talk to different businesses about what should we do in the event that there is an active shooter in our building, or what should we do if we want to reconstruct the school to be more secure. We have a lot of resources that work on those issues as a benefit to our community. K-9 is the largest mental health service location in the county, and it is important for every single citizen, even those incarcerated, that they have opportunity to have good healthcare, good mental healthcare. And it's important for them, and it's important for our community, that we're doing our best to serve this population while they're incarcerated, because they will not be incarcerated the rest of their life. Just a fact, approximately 50% of our inmates are on psychotropic drugs, which means they are managing some mental health issue. 10% of them are classified as severely mentally ill and take a significant amount of mental health services. health services. So, this is just a little snapshot of our correctional facility before I get into our performance measures. So, a correctional facility must maintain a very high, orderly, clean environment in order to have that management of the inmate population. They have to feel like they're secure. They have to know that there are rules in place. They have to know how to behave. And with those controls in place, that's how we manage the inmate population. One of the factors that measure this is the sanitation of the area that they're around. Nobody wants to take care of a place that isn't already taken care of. If it's already dirty, you don't feel bad about making it more dirty. You feel like you have to participate when that's enforced over and over again. So we, on a monthly basis, will do a jail inspection, and we will document, was this corner clean? Was this shower clean? Is this in high mechanical functionality? Are there things that we are not paying attention to to keep up on that building? And we expect a rating of eight or above. 2016, which is the last measured year, it was 8.21. And obviously, we're going to continue to work towards making that even higher as the scale of going to time. Corrections management. Okay, so this is a new performance measure for us, which is why there are no previous initiatives. And I know you know we have an AR on the agenda later on today about corrections staff. You're going to start hearing a lot about corrections staff because I'm here to tell you, we are at a crisis level with how many people we have working at that correctional facility. Our count continues to press up. We're at about 1,200 inmates right now. We have closed down our ancillary facilities, which means we do have to manage them all within our correctional facility, the main jail. And one of the things that is happening with our staff is that our staff doesn't get breaks. They are in their housing area with a direct supervision environment where all the inmates have direct access to them for their entire 12-hour shift, and they're not able to leave. And in some regards, not even able to get a bathroom break for hours at a time. So this has to change, and this is going to change. And we are working at some very specific strategies to make it change, and we are tracking this as part of our performance measures. Our goal is that 75% of available breaks are still able to get relief and leave the pod that they're working in. Immate management, again. This orderly environment is very imperative for our staff to maintain that order of control. These are inmates. They obviously have had issues with following rules at some point in their history. It is expected that they're going to have minor rule violations. Things like, you know, you're hanging clothes from the light so you can sleep, but it hinders us from looking into this. Maybe you've gotten, you know, into a verbal fight with an inmate or something like those are all minor rule violations. You use vulgarity, that's a minor rule violation. But what we do track is the major rule violations. This would be you're getting into a fight, you're doing something repetitively when you've been asked to stop, you're doing something that jeopardizes the security of the environment, like refusing to move or lock down when we've asked you to. So we track how effective rules are being followed for a number of reasons. If we have populations who are not in the right classification, they tend to violate these major rules more often. If our staff doesn't intercede quick enough when somebody's behavior is beginning to escalate, they will violate more of these major rules. So we'll track it for those reasons and then try to make adjustments as the years go or the days go. So we expect it to be less than two major rule violations per 1,000 jails. So that's one inmate, one bed, 1,000 days, if that makes sense.
So it's basically two a day, since we have about 1,200 people per day? So it's two a day?
Yep, roughly. Yep, that's valid.
Thank you.
I should have said, if anybody has any questions while I'm going, please stop me. Corrections risk avoidance. So this is also a newer measure for us. We just now started, put it on our performance measurement, but we have been tracking it since 2015. Use of force does happen in a correctional facility. It also happens in law enforcement. We don't really have much way to avoid that altogether. But what we are doing is trying to mitigate it to the largest extent possible. We're doing this through pre-event training, de-escalation training, careful monitoring and coaching with use of forces. Every use of force in our correctional facility or our law enforcement side are monitored by supervisor, they're reviewed, they're detailed out, and if there's corrective action that needs to happen, or even coaching, you could have done this better. Have you considered saying this? Have you considered waiting an extra few minutes? We do this every single use of force. What we're trying to mitigate in this performance measure is when an inmate comes to our Sallyport, escorted by law enforcement agency, there are many times that they are not happy, they want to be coming to a correctional facility, they're disappointed by the fact that they've been detained and that they're now being brought here. And the arresting agency will call our correctional facility and say, "I need some assistance in the Sallyport to help get this person out of the car." When we get that call, we'll send a group of people out to assist with it. And what we're tracking here is how many of those circumstances, how many of those circumstances we are able to not use force to end. Meaning, we'll bring the crew out, we'll de-escalate, we'll talk through it, we'll walk them in and be able to walk them all the way through the booking process. And the vast majority of time, we're able to do that, and we track that. I'm going to move on to our enforcement, our road patrol unit right now. So, road patrol, the word patrol means that you're out proactively working to incidences. We want to try to keep available time to patrol, drive through neighborhoods, check doors, talk to people at about 30%. So, I think you can see that we are meeting our 30%. What I can tell you is we're only meeting our 30% in areas that we are actually contracted to patrol. In the places that we're not contracted patrol, we're actually responding. We're not really patrolling to those areas because we don't have the resources to do that. So as you're looking at this measure, keep that in mind. It adequately varies depending on where an officer is assigned and how many other officers are contracted to be in that area. Again, it's important that we track use of forces. Every single use of force on a road patrol is reviewed by a supervisor. We work very hard at our de-escalation training so that we can prepare officers to manage a situation without the use of force, but force has to be an option for them when necessary. The national average for force in police contacts is less than 1%. Less than 1% of times that an officer makes contact with a citizen, they'll use force. Obviously, we want to keep it at or below the national average. And in our case, it's less than 0.25% that we're using force. So, we are effectively managing that risk right now, and we're going to continue to do so through training and coaching. Okay, so this one's a little bit more complicated. This is a new measure for us. We obviously have previous year's numbers, but this is the first year that you're going to see it as a performance measure for us. When somebody calls for service and they need a patrol officer, there are times when you can wait, right? My bike was stolen out of my garage. That response time might be a couple hours, and that's okay with you, right? Because it's not an urgent situation. Some people that's still not okay with, but it should be okay. It's not an urgent situation. But there are, and there are about 1,000 calls every year that the sheriff's department will respond to where we'll need to actually send a patrol car out. There are many more that people will report online, or they will report a person that we are not sending an officer out to, but 80,000 of them we send officers out to, and that number is variable. But when you call for a priority call, something is urgent, something that there is substantial risk to you, to people around you, to property, that is something where you expect to meet ears. National average is 11 minutes on a call such as that. And we're not really at the national average, to say the least, on here. You can see that we've had a year where at 1,453. We bumped up last year because our call load went up a little bit last year. And so far, right now, we're averaging about 1,440. So again, important to understand that that's a blended average. So I want you to look at this next slide. On the left, you'll see our contracted agencies. That ends with township pool average. And if you look, our township pool average right now is at the national average for priority-one response. And again, this is for priority-one calls. Some of them are a little bit over, some are a little bit below. A lot of that has to do with the call load in that particular township. What I want to draw your attention to is the further right, starting with Algoma Township and ending with district average. So you can see in those cases where we're not contracted to provide patrol resources in these, our response times are quite extended. And the gray bar that I'm also going to point out, that is called hold time for us. What that is, is, you know, somebody makes a 911 call, they call for service, and the dispatcher puts it into a CAD system. What that measures is the amount of time we are waiting for a patrol officer to be available. What you would normally hear in our radio traffic at that point is, you know, "4213, can you clear?" You know, then they'll start pulling all the actually on-call serving citizens, "Can you clear? Can you clear?" Until we can get resources to clear and go start towards these calls. So that's why you're seeing that gray bar, and you can tell in some communities because those communities are not contracted services, they have to wait for the pooled cars to be free, to be cleared, so that they can send them to a priority-one call. For a priority-one call, we will do closest car, but physically able to get there, it's difficult when you've been contracted. Example, Alpine Township. You're physically in Alpine, it's not really feasible for you to respond to a call in Grattan. These are priority-two calls. So there are nine priority levels. And I don't want you to hear priority-two and think that they're not significant calls. They are still very, very significant calls. And it would be very difficult for a layperson to distinguish between priority-one and priority-two. All of them need an urgent response. But because the national average is based on priority-one calls, that's why we use that as a separate. But here are our priority-two responses. And you can see our priority-two responses, like would be, I'll give you an example, a home invasion in progress, would be a priority-two call, and it would yield a 50-minute average response in Grattan Township. So you have somebody actively breaking into your house, and there's a 50-minute response time to your community, of which, almost a half hour is waiting for a car to clear so that they can go. This is just, so you can see kind of in general where these issues are. It's difficult when I say a whole township because you picture an entire township, but these are where a lot of the calls are clustered, that people are having long wait times. Where you see the red marks, those are actually crime hotspots, if you will, as opposed to those clusters. So the red is where we often will find a large number of officers because there's a large number of calls, or we're contracted in the circumstance of Cedar Springs, it's a area that we're contracted to stay in. So it'll look like a hotspot because they're actively working it all the time. But these other locations are places that we're called to often. And you can see it in contrast to where our long wait times are. This slide shows you the distribution of cars on a normal day shift. So our current minimum staffing is 17. And of those 17, 12 of them are contracted to stay in a specific location. They're depicted by the darker stars. The gold stars are our general-funded district cars. So our general-funded district cars would be the ones that would be eligible to go to those places that are not contracted. So if you notice, the upper eight townships don't have contracted cars. And so only our general-funded officers are able to go. Really, really important to understand, a priority-one and priority-two call generally would warrant a two-car response because of the severity of the incident. Now, we'll start responding that way, but they often will have to stage and wait for their backup to get there before they can go in. So effectively, the top 288 square miles of Kent County has one opportunity to respond for a priority-one or priority-two call. The other district cars, they act as backup as part of our contracted services. So if Gaines Township contracts for services, and they do, our obligation is to district car coverage so that if there's a priority-one or two or significant event, they have a backup car. So you can see, they're sharing that backup car with three other townships, one of which does not have contracted services. East Precinct, same thing. This is what normally happens on our day shift. This is our night shift. It goes to 16. So our night shift, day shift transitions at 5:00 P. and 7:00 P. because we don't want to pull everybody off time. But if you can think about what's happening in our community at 5:00 P. until about 10:00 P., that's when you get home from work. It's when you notice something happened during the day. It's when you finally have time to make that follow-up call. This is a heavy call time for us. We go down by one because we don't have the resources to pay for additional. You can see there's a slight transition to a general-funded car on here, so there's a one-add general-funded. And again, our contracts are lowered at this point. We've added fun or distributed a general fund, but that usually doesn't happen until after midnight when two of our contracts end. One is in Alpine and one is in Caldonia, those contracts, and we keep that officer, one of those officers on for the rest of the night. Does that make sense? So that's patrol. Enforcement and investigation. So obviously, we've reported the call, we're taking the complaint, we do some follow-up on our road patrol, but the vast majority of, like a felony incident or something that needs any, well, we'll go to our detective bureau to be resolved. And there are national standards with investigative divisions, and those national standards, they're historic. They've divided crimes into two categories, which are different than our priority-one and priority-two. But there are two categories that are used nationwide. Group A crimes, which are, tend to be, they're pretty much all felonies. They're going to be significant crimes that would need homicide, or rape, or robbery, or would be a group A crime. Those types of crimes are what this category accounts for. And we're trying to resolve more than 27% of them. So that's our performance indicator. You can see here what some comparable communities are. Ottawa at 20%, Washina at 30%, McComb at 20%. We put those down for just a matter of reference so you understand what's normally done. A large number of crimes will never be solved. We'll work on it, we'll take it to an extent, we're not able to solve it. And so we have to move on because of our call load to the other calls. So now I'll talk about group B crimes. These are largely property crimes. They're going to be, like car larceny, for example, or home invasions that aren't occupied, BNEs, things like that would be in this category. And we are hoping to resolve more than 57% of those, and we did so last year. We hope to do so this year. That matches the state of Michigan's rate. So Michigan State's rate is at about 57%. Ottawa County's at 54%, McComb 37%, Washina 70. Moving on now to our community services. So again, we've talked a little bit about what community services do. They are our preventative portion of our staff. They work on education, they work on proactive police work, they have a large education component. This is one of our community police lieutenants working with Citizens Police Academy. So that would be under their authority. And so our pledge is to maintain the highest level of professionalism and service to the community. So training is part of this community services group, too. Training for a sheriff's department is different than for a lot of other entities. We have requirements, we have mandates that we have to meet. And it's not as easy as sending an officer to GRCC for a couple add-on classes. They're very, they have to be tailored to our policies, our procedures. But then we also have to bring in people from the outside to help us with new initiatives such as de-escalation, such as risk avoidance, such as new physical tactics. So each of our staff have mandated number of hours that they have to go through training. It's substantial for our officers, at least 40 hours a year, most of our officers would have for law enforcement. At minimum, 20 hours a year for officers. It's usually much more than that for most officers. And our training staff is responsible to not only monitor outside training, but to coordinate and perform internal training. And they need to do it 100% of the time. I have no option to have it less than 100%, right? Our community services unit, again, it's that group that will communicate issues to the community. We did not have a performance measure in place for them previous to this year. This year, we are going in a satisfaction survey for those people who participated in. in classes, or people who have contracts for, like, potentially the SRO program, or the community service officer, to make sure that our goals for the, that person align with their goals, and that they're satisfied, satisfied with the outcome. So you'll see that next year's presentation, which will be maybe longer than this year's presentation. I promised you I wouldn't talk much about dispatch, and I won't, but this is a performance measure we have due to a contract with authority. We have to answer 95% of all 911 calls within 15 seconds. And again, we've talked about these numbers, but this is in excess of 140,000 calls a year, that they have to answer this quickly, within 15 seconds. It's virtually a half a ring, and they have to pick it up. And we do that 95% of the time. The balance, we have to do within 40 seconds. And in only 1% of the cases, are we not meeting that? And it's actually a fraction of a percentage. In times of surge, there is definitely circumstances where a call can't be reached, or answered that quickly. And I'll give you examples of severe storms that are going through the area, where literally everybody is calling, and I only have so many people at one time. But they do a phenomenal job with the resources they have. So budgeting issues, a subject near and dear to everybody's heart, right? Low staffing levels continue to be our primary issue. Since 2008, over 73 positions were, were eliminated at the sheriff's department. These were not all law enforcement or corrections officers. Some of them were support staff. However, the support staff functions then fell to our law enforcement officers and corrections officers, significantly impacting our ability to react to new occurrences or needs. And even more so now that some of our staff has retired, a portion of our staff is retiring. And what we would have normally had as overhead available to help transition through that we no longer have as overhead available. This results in a large amount of overtime in both corrections and law enforcement. We have worked tirelessly to come up with different strategies to reduce this overtime. We are continuing to do that. We're working, as of today, we have had difficulty recruiting and onboarding people. But as of today, we are full staff in our correctional facility, we're very close to that in our law enforcement. But the issue is, even with being full staff, it'll be almost 30 weeks before that person can be on our roster and counted as a corrections officer, because the amount of training and orientation that has to happen, before I can have them work their first day alone. It's very pressing for us. And with a low number of staff to begin with, this becomes a critical need. There are several days this summer, we've had 22, 19 people on mandatory overtime in our correctional facility. So for us to have 10 or 15 law enforcement officers working special events on Saturday or Sunday throughout the summer, because of this lack of staffing. Response times for calls is a huge priority for us. I do not feel good having extended response time up on this board today, and telling you it takes us that long to answer a call for service when somebody is actively at risk. So that is going to be something we'll continue to work on. The action requests we have in front of you today, modestly with that. And I'll jump ahead with that, so that I can just integrate it into this conversation. But for our law enforcement staff, what we've asked for is to be able to leverage some of the overtime dollars we're being paid for special event enforcement, like triathlons, fifth third, you know, events, and put on full-time deputies, so that we can do some of those special events with full-time deputies, instead of causing so much overtime. But we also gain a little bit of patrol time by, by having people available for emergency situations. It's a modest gain for the response time endeavor, but it, it's a step in the right direction. So that's why we're advocating for it today. We want our priority one, priority two call response times to drop down. And Kim, continue to move forward on that, so you're going to hear us talk about that on a more ongoing basis. Training. Training is something that's important, we've already talked about it. There is Public Act Two, which provides funding for law enforcement officers. That money has been reduced every year, as long as I remember. So obviously, it's not a great equation for increasing costs. That money also does not pay for any of the staff time associated with training. So it might pay for you to attend the session, but when I take you off patrol, it doesn't pay for the backfill, and it doesn't pay for your time to go. So that's, that's an issue. It's a statewide issue, it's something you'll continually hear about. Situation is imperative. And this means that an officer can't stand in front of a target and practice shooting the target. Officer has to practice decision-making skills about whether they should fire at the target. It means they need to practice pulling people over, and having a felony traffic stop, and de-escalating the situation, and getting people out of the car, and getting them to do the things they need him to do without force. We have to train that, we have to practice it. It's a skill that diminishes without practice. It's not a one-and-done. So these are important things for our law enforcement officers, they are the same important things for our corrections officers. We have to constantly train, and we need to. Mental health issues are present in a significant number of our citizen contacts. This training is really imperative for. We are doing something called CIT training, which is the national standard now for intervening in a mental health situation. It is a 40-hour training session for all of our law enforcement officers, 16-hour training session for corrections, and it's an eight-hour training session for our dispatch staff. It is a step in the right direction, but that needs to continue over time, or we will not make major strides for it. The biggest issue with training is the gap it then causes in your roster. It's not like I can shut down the sheriff's department and send everybody to a seminar on Friday. I can't do that. I have to constantly keep that minimum staff, which means, if I have going on this week, everybody else has mandated overtime. And they have to work while this group is being trained. Takes me at least four sessions to get through my first-line staff, in order to be able to keep people on the road, or keep people in the correctional facility in a significant amount of overtime. Opioid epidemic, you're hearing about constantly. We've already talked about it in different occasions, but I just want to reemphasize the impact on our entire community, but specifically to the sheriff's department on the road patrol. It hits us in the way that we're managing a suspicious substance in a car that you locate at 2:00 a.m. No longer is a quick check for a law enforcement officer, because of the physical risk that poses. Now, it's, oh, pull down the scene, call for vice, vice has to come over, they have to inspect it. The man-hours needed for that are significant. The number of times that we're resuscitating people with NarCam have exploded. It's quadrupled this year versus last year, and we didn't even have it. So this is a constant draw on our calls for service, and they are significant calls. They take significant amount of investigation afterwards, because if somebody's overdosing with narcotics, there is obviously a narcotics investigation that needs to happen next. So it impacts us across the board on the law enforcement. Our probably more significant impact is actually in the correctional facility. We are managing people who have a serious health risk, addiction. And this addiction is so strong, that it drives them to do things that we would have never seen years ago. We have people who try to commit suicide, because of the pain of detox is so significant. We have a significant number of people who try, and some successfully, are able to bring drugs into our correctional facility, so that they can self-manage through what they think is going to be a short-term stay. This is something that we're constantly working through. We work with community partners, this group called FAN, to help come up with strategies to manage this population. We are working through a, a pilot program with Kent County Drug Court, to try to determine if we're going to use medically assisted treatment within the correctional facility beyond what we have in the past. It's, it's an important decision, there's pros and cons on both sides, but we're really getting to the point where, if we continue to do what we have done, we will get what we have gotten. So we have to think, trying to do things in a different way, and see if we can help this epidemic in any way possible. Last year, we successfully transitioned Wyoming to our current dispatch center. That's going quite well. Just another hit on the challenges. And I want to reiterate how much human resource has helped us with this transition, and the corrections officers, and our law enforcement strategies. But we had to add 11 people, and we are almost up to staff in the transition we made 18 months ago, almost. And it's been a huge amount of overtime. That being said, the transition went quite well. We had a lot of very significant events that have happened since then, and our communication is great with Wyoming and the rest of our contracting agencies. They're quite happy with our service. We're happy with the way it folded into our center, and the ability we've had to be able to coordinate calls more effectively. So it was a good, a good contract, but not without its challenges. Obviously, you heard me a lot in this past year, talk about this 911 surcharge, so we're happy that the surcharge is now being collected, and we are very far into the process of the 800 megahertz program that we talked about extensively over the last year. So more to come on that, as we have more details. We just opened up our work release annex, and this allows us to keep work release inmates completely physically separate from the jail population. This is a significant factor in being able to smuggle drugs into our correctional facility. It was a huge factor for us. It did help us coordinate staff a little bit better, because we don't have to escort work release inmates. Work release inmates have jobs that are all over the time, so they might go out, you know, four and five times a morning, and come back five and six times at night. So to be able to not have to escort them through the correctional facility is a significant savings. We were able to put a scanner here, and they have to walk through a scanner before they can come back into the correctional facility. So it's a very effective management tool for us. Partnership with Lighthouse Academy, referred to a few minutes ago. We had our first actual high school graduate last year, and she was very proud. Her family was allowed to come in and celebrate in a, a small ceremony. We had a cake. And so we've actually had more since then, and we're looking at even more. In fact, we're meeting in the very near future with Lighthouse Academy, to try to move on some more occupational development programs and other programs that might meet our population's need. I talked to you a little bit about our media outreach program. This, this is something you'll hear us pressing more forward. The more ways that we can reach a population that we serve, the bigger variety, the more likely we are to get the feedback we need, and to get the information out that we need. The, the reason we want to curate membership to our Facebook account is so, when we have a public issue, when there's a question that is more effectively answered in that media, we have the listeners, or the viewers, to listen to us, and we have that effective communication channel open. We collaborate with agencies throughout West Michigan, in fact, throughout the country. These are just a few of our collaborations. And next year, you can hear us talk more about community outreach. We have some agenda items that we're moving forward on. We have Megahertz Project, which you're going to hear more about in the next year. And we have a new jail management software program that's being brought into its final stages of implementation, that will allow us to look more flexibly at some statistics and indicators that we can then use to manage the correctional facility better. And that's it.
All right. Thank you so much. In the interest of time, if anyone has additional questions for, for Michelle on items 11, 12, and 13, I think we should eventually ask those as well. Commissioner Cornet?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So priority one and priority two, I'm trying to understand this, so I understand the response timing, and what's going on. Can you give me an example of what a priority one and two is? And then a car accident is at a four or five, or depending on if there's an injury or not injury?
Yes.
So priority, again, it would be very difficult for you to discern between priority
one and two, but if you philosophically think about an in-progress call, something happening right now that is significant to property, or more significant to safety, then that's going to be either a priority one or two call. If it's physical safety, it's probably the priority one. If it's property, but it's timely, it's imperative that somebody come now, then it's going to be the priority two. Again, there are nine priorities. So an example of a priority two call might be a car accident with injury, but a car accident without injury that isn't blocking would be a priority nine.
That's why it takes two hours to get someone.
Well, and often, if it's not blocking, we'll tell you to report it online. And if you choose not to do that, then yeah, chill, because we're, we're going to come. But it will be when I have somebody available. And again, that, these answers are-
So if people can exchange information, and they're not blocking that injury, I mean, it's not required that the police come to the-
Right. We, we can, we have a very effective online program. We've talked about it in years previous. We've taken it out of the presentation right now. But there are many new online that's more convenient for you. And each and every one of those are reviewed by a law enforcement officer. And if you don't have resolution by just reporting it, that officer will follow up. They'll call you back, they'll, you know, we've taken it and sent that out to road patrol to then be investigated later. It just kind of depends on the circumstance of your, of your incident. We really encourage citizens to do that, because if they don't report things online, like a whole bunch of car larcenies, for example, and if only report it, we think only three of them happen. If 15 people got broken into and changed, stolen out of the car, we understand that that's probably a group that's going to keep going. They're probably going to keep doing car larcenies. We need to put some effort on those.
So I guess then my follow-up comment would be, you're asking for two people in item number 12 for the jail, and, and three supervisory, I would imagine, lieutenant, two sergeants, in item 12 as well. Is that even close to what you need?
No.
And if not, why ask for more?
This, this year, so that, that's the correctional facility question. And with the correctional facility specifically, we can only grow so fast, because of our ability to bring on people, to find, train, and then get them on the roster. So if I asked you for 10 corrections officers, you would put it in the budget, you would reserve, reserve those resources, but by the end of the year, I would not have 10 correctors up to speed.
So are you planning to ask then down the road?
Yes.
Six months, a year? Okay. And the same as far as the road patrol, does that really increase response times with a lieutenant, two sergeants?
That request is for corrections. For road patrol, we're asking for four deputies.
Okay.
And it will have a very modest impact on our response time. There will be additional general patrol officers out there during portions of the time following our request.
So is that the same issue, too, with training and so forth?
No, that is a funding issue. We're, we're asking for what you guys might be able to fund. I, I can't put it any way. So the requests that we brought to you this year are those that were fundable through the money that we had available.
So do you have the numbers on, Michelle? You said 73 FTEs have been eliminated since 2008. Could you break that down into corrections and road patrol?
I could.
Administration, we're just going to say, okay, that's gone.
Right.
That's not coming.
Well, and- So the thing that you have to point out, as I- 73 people. And I'll use the kitchen for an example. So I think there were 18 people that worked in our kitchen. We contracted out that service for 18 people. It's gone. But the function is still being accomplished. It's being accomplished through a contract.
So now we're down to 60, or 55?
Right. But now, but that contract still has to be managed. And it's a significant amount of management. It's a day-to-day management load.
Yeah, we'll say 56 then.
So I have to add back a command person to manage that contract, even though I don't have the other 18 workers. So it's a win for the county, right? It's less expensive, but it's not without something we have to do as, as a responsibility. So as you go through the, in the 73 positions, I could break down each of them, the general categories.
I don't want them broken down, I just want a general feeling for-
Most of-
How, you, 17, 16 or 17 officers on patrol during a day, how many would we have to hire to increase that by one or two?
You have to hire bodies for every one car 24/7.
Okay, so that number will go to 18 and 17.
Right. Right, a very modest increase. And I think we, we need to add law enforcement incrementally and monitor. We need to put them in place, monitor the response time, then come up with a strategy to position cars more effectively, and then add more staff. And so what I don't want to ever do is get in front of you and say, I have to have it all, and I have to have it now, and if you don't give them all to, we're not going to make any. Because I don't think that's effective management, and that's not the way I would recommend making a change to this long-term issue. But I do think it's important for the board to understand, as we continue forward in these next several years, there will be ongoing needs to add, and there will be a responsibility for the sheriff's department to then show you where we're putting them, and how it's impacting the indicators that we're telling you it will impact. I will tell you, the adds for this year will not have a huge impact on those indicators. It will be a marginal effect, because we are exchanging overtime dollars for full-time dollars, but we still have the- dollars, but we still have the special event responsibility that we're collecting the dollars for. So I might not have special events 24/7, but there are times that some of our normal patrols will actually be impacted by covering special event because I'm using these dollars for bodies instead of overtime. So this is a change in strategy. We're going to monitor it. I may have to come back to you in two years and say, ah, it didn't work so well. It won't be next year because again, it's long to actually see the results on a roster that I, I won't be able to tell you next year if it's had a huge impact. It'll actually be 18 months from now before we'll really see it. So we're going to have to try this. We're going to have to measure it, monitor it, and communicate, continue to communicate on it.
Right. Thank you. And thank you for your job. You did a great job.
Thanks.
Commissioner Ponstine.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Michelle, thanks for taking time to be with us today. Really appreciate it. One only needs to turn on the TV that law enforcement has become a very challenging, difficult job. Obviously with the budget problems that were highlighted today, I really appreciate the high level of service that you still give with those shortness of funds. So I appreciate that. I'll start with a quick yes or no question for you, warm you up. Ride-alongs for county commissioners are still available?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And recommended.
Okay. It's been about 10 years. I don't know what's changed, probably a lot. So we, we added the prison. And when we start a process like that, we have architects and engineers with a piece of paper saying, this will work, this will work. This will save money, this will save us utilities, and on and on. You would hope a new building would do that. Now that it's built, are there anything that we would, would have, should have done different? Are, are we happy with it? And then the follow-up to that is that we always talk about labor costs, which is our nature of the business. That's going to be the most expensive thing. Can buildings be designed to save? I mean, I understand the need for the ratio of deputy to prison population for the safety of the officers that are serving there. But is that, I mean, the kitchen would have been an example. You know, we, you know, I see where a new one is saved. That by building by design, positions could have been possibly saved there. So I'll-
So in general, I would say the building has been very effective and we're happy with the construct of the building and the way that it operates with the older portion of the, staffing is the biggest challenge with that building. And the, the reason is probably, it's not that it can't efficiently be run with the 1 to 64 ratio that we always try to keep. It's that when you do that and you have cut all the other fat out of that roster, again, it gets back to that relief time. So I can operate that way effectively for a day, but I can't effectively like that for day over day over day over day because of the difficulty that poses for my staff. The zero break time in a 12-hour shift because of the way the building was designed, there is no relief for them. There is nobody to even talk about, hey, what did you do last night? There's nobody to, hey, what do you think I should make for dinner? I mean, can you imagine a work environment that you literally are immersed in this population, tired day without relief? And the building was built to be managed, one deputy in a housing unit at a time. And, and that is the stress we hear from our corrections officers. I cannot take it, another shift to work 12 hours without relief or without seeing anybody or without working with other people in concert. So that's the challenge. The building was built very efficiently, but we have to remember that it still has to be managed with less than, or I should say more than the minimum amount of staff for the little dots on the map. Does that make sense?
Yep. And it, and it does. And, and I want to thank you for acknowledging that because I've had people come up to me with that exact point, is that a 12-hour shift with no breaks-
It, it's-
Is difficult.
It's difficult. I started my career in corrections and when I started in corrections, we had the old linear indirect building that we tore down. And we worked in groups of three, maybe four, and you had that camaraderie and that break to relieve some of the stress. They don't have that anymore and it, it definitely wears on them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Michelle, my questions to you are kind of all lumped into when you mentioned the 700, 700 volunteers in the sheriff's department.
Yep.
So I'm looking at the Citizens Academy. Now, I've not gone through the sheriff's one, but I did graduate from the Kentwood Police Department Citizens Academy and-
Ours is a little-
I'm sure it's more intense.
Yeah.
But at least it, it without a doubt opened my eyes up and anyone else that I could talk into it. Put together with that National Night Out, which is certainly, that comes from you, but it's, it's community oriented as far as where, where the volunteer, again, I'm getting to the volunteer idea. Parents' safety programs, which I'm, I'm curious to know more about. You don't need to go into it now. I will call you. But having done all of that and then up to the special events, how would someone in Kent County understand or know or even realize that they might be useful in taking a Citizens Academy? How is that, how by my taking that, am I just taking it for my own education, which is certainly more than enough, but could I possibly give back to me and the community by taking a program like that? Could I possibly help out with a special events at some point? I mean, am I making any sense as to how we could put these all together?
You are. So I can tell you there is no opportunity not leveraged at the sheriff's department to ask for free help.
Okay.
We, we put it out there. We have an entire session on it in our Citizens Police Academy.
Okay.
We put it out in our social media. We try to spotlight different volunteer programs that we have. And in fact, I'll put a plug out. There is a celebration September 30th at the Mounted Unit Facility to celebrate the 100-year anniversary of our Traffic Squad, which is the group of people who volunteer to help us with special events. They're actually uniformed officer, well, special reserve officers. And they help us with special events on traffic points and we, we are helpless without them. In fact, we went to talk about how to put on this event for them. We're like, we can't do it without them, but we obviously don't work in it. So we have immense support from them, but we do get questions like that from the population. They will call us and say, is there any way I can get involved? And then we have some orientation sessions for volunteers at the sheriff's department, so you can select which one. One of the programs I didn't mention, our Victim Advocate Program, that's another very popular one. That is a group of people who will escort officers to deliver death notifications. And they will stay behind with the citizens after the officer has to leave and help coordinate the after events that have to happen. They'll help reach out to somebody to come be with them, maybe a pastor that has to come and, and pray with them. Maybe they need to make arrangements for the funeral home. That's all volunteers at the department who do that.
So suffice it to say that we as commissioners could certainly step up more in letting our areas understand better some of the opportunities that are available to, to aid our sheriff's departments and our own local police departments.
That'd be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Michelle, for presenting today. I appreciate all the work that you do and our, you know, uniformed officers do too. One thing I've noticed is, you know, there's definitely lots of opportunities for our deputies for training and, you know, I feel like that's very important to continually learn and grow. Also, the department, you know, seems to be pretty effective communicating with the public in many areas, like you mentioned, social media. And, you know, I just appreciate that transparency that I've been seeing. And, you know, you mentioned my dad taking the, you know, being part of the Citizens Police Academy. He is like a kid in a candy store. He came home and showed me his book, you know, at work the next day and was just raving about it and all the opportunities. And he's most excited about the ride-along, I think. So you definitely have a good advocate for that program.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
Thank you for your presentation. Unfortunately, you delivered about a week's worth of discussion and we have five minutes.
Right.
So just to, you talked about the work at the correctional facility with Lighthouse Academy, trying to improve on the education and the graduation rates and the treatment that you provide for mental health population needs. Most of the, of the stays at the correctional facility are less than a year, though. How, how do you transition? Can you talk about that, how you transition those efforts to completion after?
In fact, that is the, the topic of the next meeting with Lighthouse Academy. Now, they do have some community-based programs that we refer. We also have some, some staff that work from Network 180 to kind of work with inmate as they're being transferred out, to, to line them up with programs that are appropriate for them on the outside. But I'll tell you, that needs to be a, a increased focus for us as years follow. It is something that is effective. If you can coordinate resources to the person on heading out, then you're going to accomplish something more than just working with them while they're in. You're right, most people stay there for less than a year. They do structure the program so that it's modules, so that they at least complete something instead of like maybe doing a traditional semester that they would have to complete every day in order to get. It's a lot of self-directed modules that's coordinated by a teacher. So it's something they can continue when they get out, but to put that into more of a routine, we need further work.
Well, and I've read you've had some great graduation rates and will continue to improve on that. That's great. With the, with the treatment for the mental health needs of this population, do you coordinate that then with outside agencies?
Yes.
Because it's the last thing you want to do is just sort of send that population out into the, into the public if they have those dramatic needs?
Right. And again, I'll mention that we work with Network 180. They are essentially our healthcare provider. And then because they are also a large player in the mental health footprint in the greater Grand Rapids area, they're able to seamlessly coordinate that outpatient treatment as somebody gets out of the correctional facility, if the inmate wants to. And, and a lot of times, that's the challenge. They're medicated. When they're here, they're stable on whatever program they need to be stable on. And often they feel good. I don't need this treatment anymore because I feel good. I'm ready to go on the outside and not have it. So there's a large percentage that won't participate in a program on the outside. But those who want to are completely coordinated when they walk out the door.
Compel them to.
Can't compel them to.
So we're doing items 12 as well here. Yeah. So on the request, I'm persuaded by the argument with respect to the staffing needs. What I'm not entirely clear is the, the economic impact of that. It seems to me that you're suggesting that by saving on the overtime, by increasing the revenues that you get by your contracting services on special events, the, the bottom line is not going to be impacted as a consequence of, if we approve these additions, it won't cost the bottom line any more than it does today?
Correct. We stayed within the same budgetary parameters. So that's the law enforcement one, right?
Yes.
I don't have the agenda here in front of me, but, so yes, the law enforcement one is a, is a neutral financial decision. It, it is a strategy change for us.
So getting back to Commissioner Cornet's questions, there are additional staffing requirements that you believe you need. You were going to present those, but those are going to start having economic, or dollar impact on the bottom line.
Yes.
Those are coming later.
They will continue to come. I don't want to make it sound like we have a big presentation that we're planning for six months from now. Every time there is a budget session, a budget cycle, we expect to add requests for additional law enforcement resources until those measurements line up to where they should be. And incrementally, I wouldn't expect us to come and ask you for 12 deputies, but I need 12 deputies to get to where we need to go. I, I probably will ask you for another four or five next year, probably five, and then five after, and then five after, because I think it's important to make incremental change so that we don't squander resources, so we don't misapply resources, because it can have a negative outcome on the other end too.
But we're going to wrestle with that when we get to the budget discussion.
Annually.
My first question was, why are we doing this now? And it is because it doesn't have an economic impact to the bottom line. This is simply strategic changes.
Because of the budget cycle is why we're doing this right now.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Skerrits.
Again, I want to echo the other commissioners in thanking you for coming, Michelle, and to, to the sheriff and all the other deputies for all their hard work. But I have several questions, so please bear with me, Chair Bolter. The, some basics, basic statistics, right? And I did some Googling and looking at the last 2015 annual statistical report. Can't find anything more update than that. But how's rate in our area of service from 2008 to 2015?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I can tell you that we are typically below or near average for communities our size with a, with a population similar to ours.
And what's our trend?
Our trend is pretty even. There's some years you'll see a downward pressure, but the next year you might see it pop up to, you know, a higher level. And some of that can have to do with new law, new enforcement standards or a change in approach, but by and large is typically stable at this point.
Okay. So then I am looking at the bookings percentages on the statistics report and that seems to be going, you know, roughly down from, looks like 28,000 to 25,000. Is that correct then?
Okay. So it's important to understand that a crime rate and a booking rate would be measuring different things.
This is just the one I can find here.
Right. So a booking rate might show result of a different court initiative, like the mental health court, for example, or a drug court, for example, where they're trying to divert inmates from the correctional facility to other community-based programs. But it doesn't mean that there wasn't a crime associated with that. They have to be brought to court by somebody. So the two are different. I would tell you that if you looked at 2016 statistics, and that manual's about ready to get published because it does take some time to compile, those numbers have, have pressed upward again in 16 and in 17 even further. So it, it does change year to year depending on trending, but by and large, it's stable if you looked at it over maybe 10 years. And you factor in our population.
Okay. I guess it would be, it would be beneficial to have these and the other statistics I'm going to ask about, you know, as we think about staffing levels. So you have calls for service at 14,000?
Calls for service are about 80,000.
80,000. And how's that trend look since 2008?
Modest, pressing upward. It's, it's, it's hard to tell, it's hard for you to know that trend based on just that number. So 80,000 has been pretty stable. There'll be some years that will pop over and there'll be some years that are less. But again, we're constantly removing types of calls from that statistic. So car larcenies, 10 years ago, were part of that 80,000. But now car larcenies aren't because they're taken online. So all those calls get removed from it. And bottom line is, we only have about 80,000 calls worth of responsibility. So if we don't, can't respond to a call in a timely way, we have to find a different way to deal with that call. And we have largely done that by our online software or having a call-in capability for somebody. We try to keep that number very stable because it's the number we can handle that we're responding to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then last statistic question, well, second to last. I believe you said 1,200 inmates at any average time?
That's what we have today. It can fluctuate quite a bit. I'd say between like 1,100 and 1,200.
And then how has that, where's that trend over time, say for the last decade?
The last decade, it would have been at a high, maybe the 2007, 2008-ish time. It pressed down for several years and now it's trending back up. The last two years have been trending back up.
And so when it was at its height, what would that have been?
It's kind of a complicated, we didn't have all the same inmates in that correctional facility at that point. We didn't have the same capacity in that correctional facility at that point. I'm going to just talk about this just a bit. This is Chief Deputy DeWitt from our correctional facility and he just looked it up, so I'm hoping he remembers.
If my memory serves me correctly, in 2009, our average daily population just in the main jail was at about 1,064. And so as a, I think I've read that we were right around 1178. We actually have more inmates in the jail that we're trying to manage with our staffing comparatively to years past. We've never been at this rate within the main jail. Today, we're managing our work release in the main jail. But before, we had the annex that was separate. And then in addition, going years back, we had the honor camp that has since been closed. We're managing those inmates now in the main jail.
And those are the ancillary facilities that you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Couple of other quick questions then. The, for, for the road patrol, item 13. Obviously, there's, you know, as you noted, quite a difference in the response time between contracted areas and non-contracted areas. But, and this is an obvious answer to an obvious question, although those townships, if they wanted to have lower times, could contract? if they wanted to have lower response times, could contract?
Proportional to their budget, it would be a far greater stretch for them to contact for services to be stationed in their township. So, but yes, they could. Anybody can.
Yeah. Um, the, okay, so, uh, I know that recently the, uh, with inmate visits from loved ones, that we moved from being room, being able to physically see each other to television. Would that change under this new staffing level or that's still going to be considered?
That's been actually several years we've been in that approach and it's largely for security measures. When you have to bring visitors into the correctional facility, they're entering your secure location, you have more risk for contraband and for whatever they might bring with them. So we don't plan to retreat from that strategy of, of doing them in, first come to the correctional facility and do it on the closed caption TV, or they could do it at home over the internet and schedule appointments with that inmate. So they've been given more time to visit, more flexibility for visiting, and we can do that because we're doing it via monitor.
Um, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, um, I mean, first and foremost, to echo what everyone has said, you know, the sheriff department does a great job with the resources that it has. Unfortunately, in the last year, I've had firsthand experience of working with officers and detectives and, and nothing but the utmost of professionalism and, you know, customer service, whatever that means within your arena. So thank you for that. I also am aware of the fact that the sheriff is an elected official and that gets reminded to me often. At the same time, you get to come here on his behalf and additional resources. So in spite of that fact that he's elected separately than us, he still has to come hang out with us.
Right.
Since your resources aren't your own. And as you noted at the outset, who knows what's happening to your resources both here and afar and the exotic places called Lansing and Washington.
Right.
Um, you know, that being said, I, I could definitely go into the weeds when you look at those charts following up on what Commissioner Skaggs said, said, you know, all of our delayed response times are out in the most rural of townships. So looking at, at least the one statistic, Casnovia had a high response time, but it had three instances, you know, like what's, and, and again, it's not to, well, it is. I mean, with, with a limited amount of resources, you have to balance, you know, all the time. And unfortunately, you're, again, you're doing a great job balancing. But without going too far into the weeds, staying back, you know, what kind of, um, what kind of oversight does the sheriff's department have? I mean, the Board of Public Works oversees the Department of Public Works and we have all kinds of citizen committees. What kind of are overseeing your work so that we don't have a two-hour session once a year, um, maybe a couple of hours every month? I mean, similarly, Commissioner Vonk, I'll blame him, he's talked about a parks commission, why, you know, it's two of our most significant public interactions, parks and sheriff. And what, what direct oversight do we have?
Well, I mean, at the point, the sheriff is an elected official, so to the extent that an oversight group would have authority over the sheriff, obviously that, that could cause a substantial amount of difficulty for the sheriff in managing the mission and making his priorities based on the overall need. That being said, we invite, uh, we invite counsel at every opportunity on topic-specific things. We have a number of opportunities for citizens to come in and through an issue or, like we contract for dispatch services. All of our constituent departments that we dispatch for are on a advisory group that come in and talk through all of our policies and procedures for dispatch and how we're managing those resources. In terms of law enforcement responses and our patrol, we meet with township boards and township citizen groups weekly to discuss their actual patrol in their area and on demand. If they call us today and say, hey, we'd really like to talk about sheriff's patrols at, you know, the Bound Township, um, meeting next Tuesday night, somebody's going to be at the Bound Township meeting next Tuesday night. We also have lieutenants that answer directly to each, um, each township supervisor. So I have one that would be responsible for central and north of the county. I have one that's responsible for the east and south of the county. We have lieutenants that work the night shift, that are the nighttime requests, and their numbers are distributed to the township supervisors so that they have access to decision-makers at our department and we are responsive to their needs.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, the, um, wow, I got distracted in my own brain, I'm sorry. The, the one that keeps popping in is how much time and energy is being spent working with the federal agency ICE? And is that being reimbursed if an energy or is that just myths on the street? What, what's actually occurring with our sheriff department?
We do nothing in the enforcement realm to assist ICE in any way, shape, or form. So we don't have any place in that. We have our normal law enforcement function. We'll bring them into the correctional facility. While they're in the correctional facility, there is an automated process in place to allow ICE to know who's incarcerated and if there's somebody who is incarcerated, have a legal interest in, um, they file appropriate paperwork that requires us to detain them. And that, that's pretty much our involvement with ICE.
The last one that, um, the, you know, back to, you know, kind of, to look at an advisory committee, not looking somebody that would have authority over the sheriff, not going into that thick of weeds, but, but to say that advisory committee, because again, I greatly appreciate, you know, when you talk about incremental change, at the same time, four patrol officers is one more car. And, you know, an advisory committee sometimes becomes champions for the different departments and what's happening because part of it is, is, is one car a year too small of an increment, you know? And, and again, I understand it's four bodies. When we look at what our force was before, five bodies, sorry, five additional deputies to have that one car 24/7, how, again, is two a better increment, which unfortunately is 10, and then we get to the above, how do we fund that? And what other priorities get pushed back? And then of course, heaven forbid, we just look at the base tax rates that we're asking our citizens to pay for what level of service. So again, it's not necessarily to overlook the sheriff as opposed to partner more with the sheriff department on some of those policy issues as opposed to just waiting for you to come forward with, again, very good incremental change moving forward. Um, yeah, so no need to respond. Thank you.
All right, I've got about 10 questions, just joking. But I do want to encourage our, our fellow committee members, you know, Michelle has been completely accessible to me. I know she's accessible to you. If you ever have, you know, questions, need to sit down with her or anyone else in the sheriff's department, I know that they, in their limited time available, will do that. And I just don't think we can thank you enough for all that you do and your team does. I wish that John Q. Public could sit here and listen to your presentation because it is just amazing how much our sheriff's department does to keep us safe. And I do have 10 to 15 questions, but I'll reserve them for another meeting. So thank you for everything you do and appreciate it.
All right, and the sheriff really wanted to be here this morning, but he's actually in Washington DC testifying with the senate today.
DC.
On the national drug issue, so he extends his apologies.
Helen, we missed him.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, we have 11 more items on the agenda today, so let's try to move through these quickly if possible. Item number five, Board of Commissioners, Board of Canvasser Appointment. What do you mean?
This is a request to reappoint Esther Turner and Jane Yule to the Board of Canvassers, each serving a four-year term, November 1, 2017 through October 31, 2021 pursuant to Public Act, uh, State Statute Regarding Board of Canvassers Appointments, Esther and Jane Yule are being recommended by their respective Democratic and Republican Committees to be appointed to four-year terms. Clerk Lyons concurs with the recommendation.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Corndyke, support by Bukowski. Any questions or concerns regarding this issue? Commissioner Skaggs?
Uh, I hate to sound petty, um, but sometimes one has to sound petty when dealing with pettiness. The proper adjective ending for addict party is democratic, not democratic. Uh, I looked it up on our ballots, that's how we do it. I looked it up on the party's website.
Ic.
That's how they do it. There's an ic on the end.
Okay.
So it'd be nice to, to see that going forward in the future.
Anything else? Is that it? Commissioner Skaggs, do you have any other comments?
Mm-mm.
Any other comments or questions for item five? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, move on to item six, Community Development Housing Commission, Kent County Community Action.
This is a recommendation to change the department name of Community Development Department and Housing Commission to Kent County Community Action. In August of 2017, Kent County and Grand Rapids approved the First Amendment to its Municipal Partnership Act Agreement, recognizing the county of Kent as the Community Action Agency for the county effective October 1, 2017. As a part of this reorganization, the Community Development Housing Commission staff will merge with the Community Action Agency staff to form the new department. The proposed department name is Kent County Community Action, which will provide a continuum of services, including but not limited to the following: nutritional services, weatherization and home rehabilitation services, senior services, utility assistance, homeless programs, community development programs, and housing vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Corndyke, by Skaggs. Any questions or comments related to this issue? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving to item seven.
This is a request to adopt the positions for Kent County Community Action. In October 2017, the county in Grand Rapids approved the First Amendment to the Municipal Partnership Act, recognizing the county as a community action agency for, uh, the county effective October 1, 2017. The attached document identifies the revised organization and position control, which includes staff from the Community Development Department and Housing Commission. The total proposed FTE full-time equivalent is 32.5, of which 31 are full-time and three are part-time. In event state or federal grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Corndyke. Any questions or comments on item seven? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to item eight, Health, addition of three full-time sanitarium positions.
This is a request to add three full-time sanitarium positions in the Environmental Health Division of the Health Department and to recommend to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee to include the positions in the 2018 Health Fund Budget. The services provided by the Environmental Health Division help to ensure the residents of Kent County have a safe food delivery system, protected water resources, proper disposal of sewage, healthier home environments, and safe recreation areas. Demand for these services has increased significantly over the past few years and without additional staff, the department is challenged to provide timely and adequate delivery of these services. To better meet the increased demand for services, the department is requesting to add two full-time sanitarium positions in the Food Safety Program and one full-time sanitary in position in the General Field Services Program. Since 2014, the number of routine restaurant inspections has increased by 11%. The number of food service facility plans, uh, reviews has increased by 42%. Based on the number of services provided in Kent County, the Michigan Department of Agricultural, Agriculture and Rural Development in a recent accreditation review and evaluation report recommended that the county add at least three additional sanitarians to ensure a safe food delivery system. From 2014-15 to 2015-16, the number of general sanitarium services has increased by percent. In addition to the increase in general services, several emerging issues have required significant staff time. Issues such as vapor intrusion, harmful algal blooms, and other forms of contamination of diverted staff resources from general sanitation services resulted in an increase in the inter, in the turnaround time experienced by customers. Total cost of salary and benefits for the three full-time sanitarium positions is included in the recommended, recommended Health Department's 2018 budget.
Associate. Moved by Commissioner Breeby. Support.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Corndyke. We do have Adam London here, if there are any questions on these positions. Do I have any questions?
Yeah, um, and the, I guess the question will, will trail throughout the next five or so, however many we have. I, I get that it's going to be in the budget, but, but where is it coming from? Is it coming from your general fund allocation? Is it coming from fees? Again, I'm a refugee from the finance, spent four years there and this is my first go-around as LHR. So, so again, where, where's this coming from? I get it'll be in your budget.
Right, so it's primarily from increased revenue created by the increased demand for the services. There is also general fund that we have moved from non-mandated programs and as we went through the budget, we were very intentional of looking for any money that we could move from either items that we think that we, we don't need or that we need less than this. And primarily increased revenue because of increased demand and also general fund that we've moved from other non-mandate programs.
But will that general fund be elimination of or reduction in positions or just the non-personnel line items?
It will not result in increase or a decrease in any other positions. There were a couple of retiree, rehire spots that we had money set aside for that we, we don't think we're going to need retired, to bring in retirees to do that work, that work can be moved to other permanent positions that currently exist. So we're not eliminating any other positions.
Um, because with this, I mean, just to put, put my unhidden agenda on the table is, is my concern is what happens with the, you know, 2 million plus or minus from the Zoo Village? Does that just get disappeared in the budget or is that going to be a more focused, this is where that investment is? Yeah, so, so again, it's not personal at all, the Health Department, just as much with the, I didn't want to leave you out, I didn't want the whole litany, you're another very public-facing department and very critical with that customer service, you know, in my comments about the sheriff department, so.
And I want to remind our committee members, we're not here, I mean, as you know, we're not, this will still have to go through the budget. Anything we approve today is basically just approving the position description and the, and the position potential need, but the budget, uh, the budget subcommittee will still have to, more hoops to go through before we can get this right.
However, according to our standing rules, this is like our only hoop because when it gets to the full budget.
Right, for sure.
It's like a thumbs up, thumbs down, no amendments, no nothing.
Correct.
So if we don't do enough due diligence here.
Yep.
We're just kicking the can to finance, which I'm not opposed to at times, but, sorry.
Commissioner Ponstek.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Adam, thanks for the work. One, one of the things I appreciate is going out to eat and not getting sick. And that's the responsibility of sanitariums, but just the increase, not just this year, but consistently is, it's a healthy economy. We've got growth here, which increases the demand in services. But I hats off to the sanitariums because a once visit every year isn't going to guarantee that I have safe food on the plate. They do more than that. They educate the people and then when they see a problem, try to work through it. I encourage any county commissioner to go on a sanitarium tour with one of the staff levels. I've done it, it's very, very educational, it's opening tubes, so thank you for all the work.
Yeah, and I would also encourage the commissioners to do that, though we are certainly more than happy to escort you along for the day or half day or whatever works into your schedule.
Maybe I don't want to go, I don't know.
You do.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Uh, thank you, Chair Bolter. I, I have a question for you, I guess, just to elaborate on what you had said before, completely understanding Commissioner Bukowski's thoughts. So we, what we are basically doing here is saying, we believe that the, these new positions fill a need.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then finance will decide if we can have the budgetary resources to fill that need.
Correct. Commissioner Stach.
Thank you, Chair. So again, it's, maybe I'm slower at this point, but process that we're looking at of approving this is not approving the funding. So ultimately, Commissioner Bukowski's former committee will be in power to determine, do we have the funds to cover this?
Correct. And you will have two work sessions to also dive into this question as well.
My concern though, I guess, is when it goes back to the finance committee, if it comes here and we've said yes, we believe that you ought to spend the extra $250,000 for. and we've said yes, we believe that you ought to spend the extra $250,000 out of next year's budget purpose, doesn't that become presumptively validated at the Finance Committee? Maybe not, maybe it's presumptively invalid if we do it.
Well, what you're presumptively doing is validating whether there's a need or not.
Okay, but I guess, again, looking at the question, does the cost, because all of these decisions have to get made in the balance of, do we have enough money to do this? Because I'm sure every other department is going to have another need that needs to have some additional funding. Where does that balance, doesn't that balance go on in the budgetary conversation?
Correct.
And in that budgetation, is our approval that this is a valid use of funds, given priority, balanced consideration, presumptive validity?
I guess it's kind of up to them, how they interpret it. Right?
It is, it is a question of whether or not you've validated the need, that you will have an opportunity to dive deeper into this discussion again with the two work sessions. But we would not, we would not bring these to your attention if we didn't feel, believe that there are definite needs. I mean, we have taken the time, as an operation budget review committee, my office, staff, we drilled this group, the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department, the Parks Department, very diligently, I believe, to assess this, so that by the time it gets here, you're not in that awkward position of recommending something that would go to the committee in a presumption that there isn't a need, so...
And I certainly accept that. I, and all of the vetting that staff have done is thorough, it's complete. The tough question seems to me is at the point where all of these validated, vetted determinations about need add up to more money than we have, and then we have to make the tough decision about, well, how are we going to fund this? Where are we not?
These recommendations will fit in the balanced, structurally balanced budget that Finance Committee, the Board of Commissioners advocated or spelled out in their recommendation to this office. So we're not recommending anything beyond what's, what our budget would allow for. We're not creating excess expenses beyond what the revenues would allow.
So those next requests, however many there are, aren't going to add up to more than we're...
That's correct.
And I think since we are my budgets, didn't come before us, we as legislative committee members wouldn't have the opportunity to properly vet these positions. So I kind of view it as that role as well. Are there any other questions for Adam?
I have a question, just a comment. Thank you, Adam, for the work that you do. In my first twelve years as a commissioner, I had no requests from restaurants for, you know, Health Department inspections, and the last six months, I've had three. So I see that there is a need, because the staff that you had quit to do all the inspections that need to be done, because as Commissioner Pronsky said, I want to make sure I eat healthy food, drink beer that's been inspected and everything's up to snuff. So I think it's valid, and I think it's a positive thing, it's economic development within our county, obviously. If there's more breweries and restaurants and everything else popping up that need to have the Health Department take a look at, so, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions for Adam? All right, seeing none, all in favor of item...
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's move on to item nine.
This is a request to recommend to add a full-time assistant park manager position, and to recommend to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee to include the position in the 2018 General Fund Budget. Millennium Park is currently staffed with a full-time park manager and a full-time assistant park manager and one day per week coverage from an assistant park manager assigned to Johnson Park. This park leader has been in place since Millennium Park opened in 2004. Since opening, Millennium Park has experienced growth in the scope of this operation in several areas, including the addition of the meadows and associated pavilion rentals, addition of upwards of 9,000 boat rentals annually, insourcing of snack bar operations, and addition of the Fred Meyer Millennium Park Trail Network. Park leadership has struggled to provide adequate oversight and customer service as the park has expanded in complexity over time. The Parks Department has requested to add an additional full-time assistant park manager at Millennium Park to allow for increased oversight of park operations, group and community events, and large seasonal work at Millennium Park. This proposed new position would also provide dedicated management for the department's growing network with park trails and its regional trail network. The cost for this position is included in the recommended 2018 General Fund Budget.
Do I have a motion? Some move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Breeby, Commissioner Box. We have Roger here, if there are any questions. Do I have any questions for this? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Melk. Oh, moved it.
Sorry.
Any questions, Commissioner Skaggs?
I think it would just be helpful, sort of the same, similar type of question that I had for the Sheriff Department, to, you know, I understand that we're, on some level, perhaps not in this specific case, given the cuts of the Great Recession, that we may be moving back to previous staffing levels. So it would just be helpful in the future to have, I mean, a nice bar chart would be nice, to look at staffing levels over the last decade, twelve, fifteen years, to give us some sense of that. I mean, I understand that we're dealing with a lot of other issues here about revenue and the snack bar and expansion of Millennium Park that were discussed, but just to help me out, how many full-time yearly positions are there in the Parks Department?
Uh, there are twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you, Roger.
Any other questions for Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, similar question as before, thank you, Roger. Is this being in the general fund budget, will it be partially offset by increased revenues and new general fund allocation, or is this all increased revenues?
So we've seen the sick increase in activity over the last few years also increases the revenues, which is part of our base budget, and we're going to allocate a portion of those revenues to this position.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just, if I can follow up on that, Chair Bolter, thank you. Do we expect that adding these positions will increase those revenues, you know, at a rate higher than they've been increasing to this point?
At a rate higher, I don't know. I mean, we've added the, we've added the Meadows area, and we've ended up with activities that Millennium Park never dreamed about with five Ks. We have more five Ks in fundraisers than any single location in Grand Rapids or Kent County. And, you know, our normal season used to be May 1 through the end of October. Now we're pushing it into, through November, and so we have, we have five Ks every weekend, and with hundreds to thousands of people. And it's those large events, they keep on growing, we purposely work with the groups to grow those events, and so that's just a whole nother part of the park that is growing, so I think those revenues will in part offset the cost of this.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of this additional park manager? Aye.
Yes.
All opposed? All right, moving on to item ten, Probate Court Addition of a Part-Time Clerk.
Okay, this is a recommendation to add a part-time clerk-to-position in the probate court, and to recommend to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee to include the position in the 2018 General Fund Budget. Since 2009, the probate court has been staffed with fourteen full-time employees and one part-time employee. In that same timeframe, new filings in the probate court grew by over thirty-six percent, the largest ever been in the new mental commitment case filings, where filings for county residents has increased by at least forty-three percent, and filings for non-county residents have doubled. New responsibilities have also been added to processing various types of cases, either due to added requirements or in accordance with best practices. Combination of increased caseload and added case processing responsibilities have left the court struggling to keep up with the workload and still maintain acceptable service levels. As a result, the probate court is requesting the addition of a part-time clerk-to-position to assist with mental cases. The cost of salary and benefits for the position is included in the department's 2018 budget request.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you so much. We have Susan Quatney here, if there are any questions for Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, we added a judge. No, 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 and I, I mean, I met with you often, because I got to sit through the Judicial Review Committee not once but twice, and there was a clerk that was, there was a clerk added to the judge, correct? And just, I mean, just from a staffing perspective, you know, is this, how this fits in that?
The way the new judge worked was, and that's Judge Ackert.
Not just St. Joe's, we have not had specific violent incidences in Kent County, but it is a nationwide trend, and increased court security is really important. And that being said, I can speak to the more violent type of outbursts we do see also in Kent County, like if somebody's being brought to court for domestic violence, and then there's people in the courtroom, the outbursts from members, that has happened often in Kent County. We specifically see it down the street at the Circuit Court on a pretty regular basis. It's, security is necessary in a courtroom, for sure.
Can I just speak to that too? Is this the same, when we did the judicial, judicial, I think it was Review Committee, where we talked about adding a judge, wasn't it that best practice would require two deputies, and we only had to do one for a long time, and so this would add, is that the same?
It's similar. So I think that was specific to the transporting of people to and from the courtroom, and this doesn't even provide for that in the district court. What this provides for is if there's two sessions going on simultaneously, and they both request a deputy be in there, there's a deputy available for both of them, because otherwise today, only one can have them at a time, and that obviously leaves a gap. There is an additionally, there's a booking location that's down in the basement of the 63rd District Court, and that's where mandated fingerprints and picture has to happen. So in a large number of circumstances now, if the deputy's down fingerprinting and taking the pictures of people who are going to district court, because we need to in order to track criminal histories, there's nobody available to be in the court. So it could, one, have the potential of slowing down all the processes, which creates more angst on everybody's part, or it could have a judge going forward at some risk.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of item eleven?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
This is a recommendation to add one full-time lieutenant, two full-time sergeants, and two full-time corrections officers in the jail, and to recommend to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee to include the positions in the 2018 General Fund Budget. The sheriff is requesting one additional lieutenant and two additional sergeants to bridge a current gap in supervisory coverage during peak hours of operation. This added supervision will help to ensure that staff are properly trained, supervised, and mentored. Adding these supervisors will also allow each squad to be staffed with one lieutenant and four sergeants. After allotting one sergeant off for benefit time and assigning one sergeant to oversee, interns would be assigned to oversee all remaining jail operations and to supervise approximately thirty-six deputies versus only one sergeant assigned to overseeing remaining jail operations today. The sheriff is also requesting two additional corrections officers to mitigate use of overtime for staff who are absent or on special assignment. When fully staffed and after-scheduled benefit hours have been awarded, the two-night shift squads fluctuate between one person above minimum staffing levels. Events such as unscheduled absences, training requirements, or hospital transports routinely require payment of overtime to minimum staffing levels. The additional corrections officers will provide added capacity to backfill for these events, thereby reducing the frequency with which overtime is needed to maintain minimum staffing levels. The cost of salary and benefits for these positions will be included in the department's 2018 budget and will be offset by increased revenues.
Do I have a motion for item twelve?
Some move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Corndyke, moved by Commissioner Stig. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's move on to item thirteen.
Did we miss a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He wanted to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, you know, I have supported this already, since we have the vote.
Sorry, Commissioner Skaggs, I didn't see you.
But...
I should have known.
But I'm going to have one for the next one, too.
Okay.
You know, because this does appear to be not adding additional funds to the budget, I just would encourage staff to, you know, continue some of the processes that we, some of the newer courts, that we need to think about the supply of inmates that we're sending to the jail, and whether or not having them all there is entirely necessary, that may have some solutions in Lansing, it may have some solutions with our own internal process, it may have some solutions with the prosecutor's office, but, you know, we have probably quite a few people in that jail, it would be great to know the answer to it, that are there because they can't afford cash bail bond. And so I think that be cautious in the future about whether we can only, well, I won't say only. We need to make sure that we're balancing increasing correctional staff versus trying to deal with the main problem, which is making sure that while keeping our community as safe as possible, that we're also sure that we're not sending people to jail that really don't need to be there.
Any other comments or questions? All right, let's move on to item...
This is a request to add four full-time control, county patrol officer positions, and to recommend to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee to include the positions in the 2018 General Fund Budget. Sheriff's Office is requesting four additional full-time county patrol officer positions to allow for improved response time for higher priority incidents such as abduction, abuse, felonious assault, armed robbery, and home invasion. The additional county patrol officer positions will also help to provide adequate service, given the increased demands placed on road patrol function resulting from an eleven percent increase in the population of Kent County since 2000. In 2016, patrol responded to over ten thousand more incidents than in 2013. Costs for services requiring two or more cars increased by over three thousand over the past four years. Currently, special events are staffed by county patrol officers working overtime. The addition of these four new positions will increase capacity enough to allow for, to be added to the roster and scheduled as part of normal working hours. The savings from the reduction in overtime expense will be used to fund the costs of wages and benefits for the four positions.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Box, support by Commissioner Breeby. We have had quite a bit of discussion on this, is there more? Commissioner Skaggs?
I'm going to be voting no on this, in large part because, although I appreciate the idea of setting goals, I think it's unfair to my constituents who, I think, want to have higher response times and therefore pay for their Grand Rapids Police Department or their Department of Public Safety in East Grand Rapids to get those response times. And if the citizens of this township, these townships simply don't want to have contractual services, then they get the services for what they want to pay for. Whether or not my constituents ought to be subsidizing them to have a higher level is a question that has an easy answer for me.
Commissioner Melk?
I'm starting to get two opposites here. Just a quick comment, and Catwood certainly has a wonderful response time with our home police force. I appreciate that we don't have to necessarily contract out, and yet, having said that, this is a time when safety is absolutely everyone's foremost of their mind. I don't care where you go, what you think, you send your kids to school, you send your kids to baseball practice, whatever, I mean, safety is so at the top of what we are saying. And so I personally find it too bad that we can, and I can't change this, but I'm just throwing this out there, that we can pay some of our persons who stuff a basketball in a hoop or make a touchdown and bash heads and all of these things, the amount of money that we can, and we cannot pay those persons who are right there when we need them to satisfy the job that they do, and I'm sorry, I can't change that. So I just want to go on record as saying, personally, I think that I'd like to see us be able to fund two, three, four more cars. I know that's not an option, I understand the constraints, but that's just a comment that I would like to make.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, we are on to item fourteen, miscellaneous. Any Commissioner, Commissioner Box?
Thank you, Chair. Just sort of a point of order, today we had the report from the Sheriff's Department, and I think we should clean the agenda to have that report, and it should be a full report every year, and if it need to be said more often, or there's components that need to be talked about, it's a large part of our budget, and we need to do it. to be talked about, it's a large part of our budget and we need to do a few diligence. And while full reports and the snapshot, the year that you're going to have a snapshot from a department, if they need additional time, I think we should take that additional time, that's our responsibility. So I just pass that on as for you, Chair, and we're always in a process of change, and at one time, we just did the, we did it biannually for each department, and the snapshot was added on, but we can progress from that. And then, years ago, you used to talk about the silent majority, and I didn't say much during the sheriff's presentation. I participated in GRI almost 40 years ago, and it made, changed lives of many of the people that we contacted at the jail through the Forgotten Man Ministry, and I think that was important work, and it's still good work, and my brother still participates at the jail network. I've also participated in the police academy, and I graduated from that after shooting about everybody there was to be shot during a simulation of a robbery or whatever took place on the screen. I was able to do that. And then, as a township supervisor, what the inner sheriff said, working with the townships, they do great work, working with the townships, and they always responded, well, what do you want us to do? And they were always helpful, and I can just take my hats off. So just because I was silent this morning doesn't mean I wasn't concerned, and I thank you for all your good work, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn, for saying that. I was thinking the exact same thing regarding the time today, and I apologize that it was meeting, I did try to call everyone ahead of time, and it's just kind of the nature of approving these positions before the budget session starts, so, thank you. Any other commissioner miscellaneous today?
I just have one, I want to remind everyone that we are continuing to take applications for all of the citizen advisory boards and commissions and committees, and I really want to try to push that. Get it out on your Facebook, talk to people, email your contacts. I believe we're closing the 30th, so we've got a couple more weeks to collect those, and sometimes we get big interest in various committees, and sometimes we get no one, so... Just want to push that. And then, Wayman, do you want to mention some surveys?
Just the surveys that the commissioners received for feedback on communications from the administrator's office. If you could, if you haven't already gotten those back to Pam, please do so in the next day or so.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.